They were good.
I saw.
The ones I saw, me, were tense. Alright. It is seven o'clock. All this meeting in order will start our council meeting with roll call. Here. Here. Here.
Here.
These rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first item tonight is our consent agenda, which is to approve the minutes of the council meeting of November fifteenth. And to approve payments number eight forty-three, any questions or discussion about the consent agenda?
Make a motion.
A motion of second?
Yes.
One Michael?
Yes.
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 Our next item is called the public, members of the public are welcome to use this time to comment about matters relating to city business not listed on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone wishing to address the council tonight? Step forward.
Okay, Rose Bergweger, and you need my address, ninety-one sixty Cedar Creek Road, Soto. Okay, I wanted to come tonight just to give a wrap up for two thousand eighteen. And first off, thank you for combining resources with discovering DeSoto because with you, the city, and advertisers, and myself, it would not be possible if there were all three aspects. And so, thank you, and I think it's continued to be successful. I've gotten positive feedback from the public, residents, businesses, advertisers, and a lot of people are very happy with the publication, including myself. And, and so, on the first page I gave you, it's kind of the new things this year is we've had new restaurants and, you know, new holiday shops, and then, of course, as you know, the building and housing for two eighteen. And so, that's really been able to be, inform our residents, and, you know, let people know what's available in DeSoto. And then, the other part on that first page is marketing to surrounding communities. And that's something that I took my own initiative when we started opening up some new restaurants. I wanted other places nearby to know about that. And so, on the second page, there's kind of a chart of two thousand seventeen, and then two thousand eighteen was a proposal. And then, at the bottom is the actual. And what I did, starting in the summer, was I raised the amount of copies that were being printed. The first time in the summer, or I guess the fall was one of those two, but the builders actually, there's about five hundred extra copies that our developers wanted, and they purchased, and so, so that peak one was four thousand five hundred. And then, we, you know, with the new restaurants and that, so I added some additional distribution in Linwood. And the Lenexa Route that borders DeSoto on the east side, and we're also at Earl May, and suburban lawn and garden, and there's a couple lists on there. And then, I have several other place, like Harps and Steve's Market, and then, there's like a two-page sheet of different places that the magazine goes, because I thought people needed to know about all that DeSoto has, and that. So, I, and I toned it down a little bit more for the winter holiday, just because my costs were getting a little higher in that. And so, so anyway, in the new year, then, I'm going to be looking at how much advertising I have, and, and also, you'll notice, the other thing is that we went from, we began with twenty-four pages, last year was mainly twenty-eight pages, and then this year, the last two issues have gone up to thirty-two pages. And so, that's kind of a good thing, that there's a lot to write about in DeSoto, and to let the public know. And then, my advertising has also increased too, so it's worked together. But I think, you know, it's actually developed nicely. Discover Udora, they publish two times a year rather than four times a year. And then, the Shawnee Dispatch, I don't know if you heard, that is no longer in its existence, which is a shame, because that's a huge, you know, market for Johnson County, so. But, anyway, I'm glad that I can continue with discovering DeSoto, and I think it's been really good for our growing area, and that. So, so I probably will come back on a different time when I'm on the agenda, because I guess my question would be for you to think about whether, you know, if I would keep, you know, increase paint, printing extra, I will need to increase my advertising revenue, and, you know, and see if the city would be interested in also contributing towards that. Or, you know, also, I'm happy to pull back a little bit too, but especially with these new businesses, and new housing, that was kind of why I, why I increased our printing. And so, you can see some of the different printing costs down there. So, part of my advertising, all that, I've reinvested into printing more for the city. So, so are there any questions or comments?
Questions, comments? Pretty well received around the community, I know everybody I've talked to enjoys getting it in the mail, and.
I think it's very effective, I like how the city pages stand out. I'm curious what your thoughts are on the kind of the social media relationship to, you know, I follow your Facebook page. Got five hundred and seventy-five people following your Facebook page. I'm curious, what's your thought on pushing out information, or the relationship between your social media presence?
Okay, well, my emphasis is mainly on print. It takes quite a bit to get that print, you know, to all that's involved. We have that in and around DeSoto, and so, he has almost two thousand followers, and, you know, I don't really have the time and energy to compete with him, or. I thought about actually talking with him about forwarding, you know, I try to forward things on his page that are pertinent, and, and go check his page once in a while, and bring things over. Not every, you know, that's a little broader-based Facebook page. And, you know, so my main focus is actually to stick with print, and especially since it's mailed to the homes. And then, I try to put on the events mainly that are going on, just to, you know, remind people. But, yeah, so, that's pretty much my.
Well, your thought may be the relationship between the city's social media presence and material that is relevant in discovering DeSoto.
Oh, I would be happy to, yeah, forward.
I think it's a very effective communication tool, communications of big strategic objective. How do we leverage all of those channels?
Right, right, right. And, you know, and I occasionally do visit the city Facebook page, and, but, you know, I would be happy to, you know, also put things on my Facebook page too, because I try to, you know, like I said, utilize in and around DeSoto, and then, share, share different things from other Facebook pages too.
Thank you, Rose.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, old business, we have none, so, new business, number four. A, consider approval of the cereal malt beverage license for Minute Mart under new ownership.
Yes, council, I sent you a copy of the corporate application that we received. Patrick and I worked with the agent at Ernst &amp; Young concerning the new business owner. It's still going to retain the name of Minute Mart, it has just changed ownership in that respect, a little bit different LLC this time, different owners in that part of it. But, they did have a store closing yesterday, all of their paperwork and their computer systems and all of that was a changeover. Other than the behind-the-scenes part of it, the store and everything else will remain the same. And the new company has also applied for the twenty-nineteen cereal malt beverage license, so that will be coming back to you at the next council meeting along with the four other applications being renewed for our businesses here in town.
Okay.
Patrick, do you have anything further to add?
Nope, I think you covered it.
It's all standard, Walters was going down to do the inspections, so everything is good as far as we can tell.
So, all we need is a motion to approve the cereal malt beverage permit for Minute Mart, is that correct?
That's correct.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion of second, roll call, please.
Uh, Michael?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Lanning?
Yes.
Murdock?
Yes.
Okay, our next item is to receive a presentation on the Ninety-first Street and K-ten Traffic Signal Project Designs.
Yes, yes, council, Joel Buffington is here with CFS Engineers to work us through where we are in the design process. Essentially, the design phase is nearing completion for both, both of the projects, and we have what is essentially, I think, almost finalized set of plans. So, Joel's going to talk you through that, and then, we can discuss some of the latest project cost estimates that he generated this week, and answer any questions you might have about implementation. Turn it over to you, Joel.
Okay, thank you, council, for having me. My name's Joel Buffington, I work with CFS Engineers, working on these two DeSoto projects. Just going to give you a quick overview, I think most of you probably are familiar with the Ninety-first project, but, excuse me. As Mike said, we are getting on to final plans. Ninety-first Street Extension is about a half-mile worth of new roadway, three-lane, or, I'm sorry, two lanes, with bike lanes. Yes, bike lanes on each side of the road. On the south side of the road, we will be building an eight-foot multi-use trail. On the north side, we will be building five-foot sidewalk. So, this is between the Merck entrance, and then west to Sunflower Road. I brought a little pointer.
Okay.
So, we can, so on this, here we go, there's our trail on the south side, sidewalk on the north side, you see the bike lanes. So, we're going to extend that to match over by the Merck entrance. Our striping is going to, we're going to re-stripe existing Ninety-first Street through, in front of the schools, and allow for bike lanes, a three-lane section and bike lanes through there. So, it will be a continuous bike route. We'll also extend the trail to the east over to connect to Lexington.
Joel, do you want to talk a little bit about the alignment change at the far west end?
So, on the west end, you can see we have reverse curves here, so we shift the road to the south. When we started the project, we started thinking about what is the future use of Ninety-first, and through discussions, there's, there may be an extension at some time. And as everyone knows, Lexington Park is to the west and north of this project. So, we were looking at where the property line was, and there's actually a little forbay for the lake there. So, we decided to shift the road south, so we could, so we could avoid having to acquire property from parks in the future.
Let me just pull up, I don't mean to stop you too much.
I don't have an official pretty show, so if anybody has questions or comments.
I just want to show what's going on a little further west of there, because I think, I don't know if we've really talked much about it, but that Park Master Plan that was done ten years ago, we tried really hard to get the Park District to show a future road ride alignment along the south line, to show half that right-of-way. And they were, they were pretty adamant that they didn't, didn't want to do that, and consistent, they're very consistent with that. So, looking at that prospect, that, that, you know, obtaining that half of that right-of-way with, from the Park District doesn't appear very likely, and if so, I think we'd use a lot of political capital getting that done, might not be worth it. But then, also, there's an engineering reason for it too. The larger lake that's on the property has this smaller, kind of a siltation lake there. And keeping this along that alignment, we'd have to deal with that. So, there's reason to believe we'd have to shift this south anyway there, so we just decided, go ahead and shift it south here before we get to Sunflower Road, so. So, that's, that's where we ended up, and that's why, that's why we have the shift there. West further, yeah. I'll just back out a little bit.
It could go all straight over all the way to Evening Star.
I don't know if you remember.
It's a little rougher through there.
It's a little steep.
I'm sure there's a path through there.
There was a residential subdivision proposed.
Or Edgerton, yeah.
This is.
Not Evening Star, Edgerton, right, sorry.
Yeah, five or six years ago, there was a rural residential subdivision proposed for this area, and they showed that road extending through that subdivision to Edgerton, more or less on this section line, but not exactly. Okay, Joel, it's yours again, sorry.
Okay, Mike, do you want to flip to maybe the first plan sheet?
Yep.
We'll just kind of flip there from west to east. Okay, so, right here is our connection to Sunflower Road, and this is where we shift to the south. So, we're, the road to the east is on the section line, and then we go south, the section line is the park property. On the north sidewalk, and the south, I guess, you can see we have, we're putting in a crossing here across Ninety-first, and then taking a trail section up to, near the park entrance. There's no, there's no sidewalk or trail to Sunflower from the park, but we're going to go ahead and build this trail section, and just tie it in there to Sunflower. I guess one thing real quick, this is BNP Land Company. At some point, there was, when the, it was platted, they dedicated forty-foot of right-of-way and twenty-foot of easement along that north piece of that property. So, good for the project, we have right-of-way. We will be taking, or, yeah, we'll be acquiring a small section of right-of-way and easement through here due to the shift south. But once you get to the east. Next, can you flip it to the next one? So, over here, once we tie back into the section line, this is all existing easement and existing right-of-way.
Yeah, we didn't know we had right-of-way on BP's property until we did the O and E search on that, so it turns out we did, so that's good news.
Good job, Patrick.
Was there any acquisition costs that were anticipated? We don't have to.
No, no. We didn't.
We had fifty thousand, I think, in our original budget for right-of-way, so.
We'll still need to acquire some.
Yeah, yeah, but hopefully they'll donate the little bit that they do need to take out.
Yeah, and every indication he's given me is that that will be the case.
So, we have some, we have a couple drainage easements on this property, and then, two or three drainage easements to the east. I guess I'll talk to, about that one when we get to it. Okay, flip the next one, Mike, please. Yeah.
Real exciting stuff.
There's no driveways to mess around with, no property owners, except, well, two large property owners.
So, these lines up, this line up here, I think, is the start of the Intervet Campus? Is that right? I think that's right.
It's probably the developed part of it.
Yeah, the developed part of it starts. So, you want me to keep going, Joel?
Sure. Okay, so this is where we tie into the existing road. Right there is the Intervet entrance. And just, I always get permission to go on to their property, is my advice.
Yeah, they, they keep tabs on that.
We had our, we were doing some geotech work, and the truck driver got in there, and we received an email from them, they were a little concerned what we were doing. So, this is, this is the trail, you can see where we tie into the road, it's the same, basically the same section there, the same width, and we'll tie in there. The trail will go to the east. Flip to the next one, please, Mike. Okay, so, I mentioned we were going to make a continuous connection of the trail and the sidewalk. So, there's a small section right here that was not built of sidewalk, so that's going to be part of the project, and that will, more, I think that's, that's a big piece that was missing, to keep it, to get a continuous sidewalk.
In front of Star Side, that's, those are the two Star Side entrances.
Okay.
Replacing a few of those handicap ramps along the way.
Yeah, we did a field check with the city, and we identified a couple spots where the concrete was crumbling, and maybe didn't have the right slopes on the sidewalk ramp, so we'll redo those with this project. One thing to mention on the right-of-way here, so this was, Mike, was this the ninety-one project?
This was the ninety-one, yeah, the ninety-one project ended here at that property line.
Okay. So, when this road was built and swung south here, the plans show right-of-way and drainage easements, but nothing was recorded, as far as we could tell. On our O and E reports, we didn't, there, it wasn't, it's not recorded with the county. So, I mean, I guess technically, you've been using it, so, we're going to, we've written up easements and made exhibits to go to Olathe Medical Center, and have them, ask them to donate that little, it's really, it's kind of this little, this little piece here, that little kind of triangle shape. So, again, we were going to ask them to donate that land. I believe it was a different owner when that road was built.
Yeah, it was, it was, Olathe Med bought it since then.
So, we'll include that with this project, as well as these, these pipe, these pipes that go into that property do not have an easement, so we're going to show them this easement around the pipes and the outlet.
Those are existing storm sewers. Yeah.
Yeah, there'll be no work on that pipe there, or the roadway through this section, just the trail. And we will be needing some construction easement to build that trail off to the side, off to the south.
So, this, this sheet here just shows the trail continuing along the existing segment, same thing here.
There's another drainage easement we'll be asking for. And we have a construction easement through here. And then, this connects to the restaurant.
Alpatron's right there in the bottom right, that's the Alpatron Building.
Yes, yep. Okay, and then when we get over to Lexington, we're going to extend that trail, and build ramps here and here, to accommodate a crossing right here. I know, you, there's an existing crossing at this location, and this is probably something you guys are going to talk about later on your roundabout.
Yep, yep, don't, don't say that yet, it's a surprise.
Surprise. So, we'll build a ramp in this corner that will access south to north and east to west, there's an existing ramp over here. So, along with the Ninety-first project, we're going to build the trail from Ninety-first down to K-ten. Okay, this is.
So, on this one, north is to the right, so that's the intersection with the traffic light.
This is K-ten, the K-ten ramps right here in Commerce on the bottom of the sheet.
We just thought, you know, with the, with the kids going from the high school, from the school campus to McDonald's, or to the heart, that area, crossing Lexington's a problem. And if we can get them, keep them along the west side to the traffic signal, then we have a crossing location. So, that's, that's what this is, this is for. And it, so this ties into the signal project, but, Joel, are we going to, actually, are we going to do that, the handicap ramp on the east, northeast quadrant there with this project?
So, with the, with this crossing at the intersection, we'll, this is the extension, and then we'll need a sidewalk ramp on this side. We'll also need to cut that nose of the median off a little bit to make that crosswalk. So, what we've discussed with Mike and Rick is include this with the Ninety-first Street project, even, it's, it's, it's with that intersection project, but I think it makes sense to have all of the concrete work and the trail and sidewalk work be with the Ninety-first Street project, I think it's going to be more affordable, you're going to get a better price, for sure.
Yeah, and mostly, really mostly, because Cars is paying for half of this, and we don't get any help on the signal project. We talked about that.
Single part of the cars, too.
Yeah.
It does, kind of, yeah, with the safety and the pedestrian.
Are we rebuilt, what's on this, this sheet, Joel, we rebuilding that handicap?
This is Ninety-first and Lexington, I think this is kind of a repeat of the two sheets ago, so here's, here's that trail along Lexington, or along Ninety-first, and then, along Lexington here.
There's a little gap between sheet twelve and sheet thirteen, and that's what you're showing on sheet fourteen, right? There's just about a little, seems like there's about a hundred-foot gap.
Yeah, the sheet numbers are different in your packet than they are here.
Okay, this is, which one did you say?
I was kind of wondering why that seemed to be repeated, but I guess I noticed that there's about a hundred-foot gap, so you must have filled that other, what is now sheet?
Twenty, yeah.
Yeah, that's a little confusing, we may need to reorder sheets.
Okay.
Okay. So, Mike and I have been working this week, in the past couple weeks, getting all the right-of-way documents, I'm sure Patrick's been involved, I know Patrick's been involved with the right-of-way process through the, through this project. So, I was hoping to have something for you today, Mike, but I was. Um, so I was hoping to have something for you today, Mike, but I was trying to match up call-outs with your document from the exhibit, so it was a little, I had a few more things to do. So we should have, um, sealed documents to the city tomorrow. Uh, you need originals?
Um, no, just PDFs are fine.
PDFs will work, okay.
I was gonna slap them in one PDF and.
Oh, yeah.
Put the space in?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Oh. I knew that, sorry, that was.
That's all right, it's about one year before.
Good, thank you. Um, so with this project, we'll have street lighting, um, from what I understand, West Star will build the, the lighting and.
Oh, yeah, so do your cost estimates include lighting, street lighting?
I need to talk to the West Star.
Okay.
Salesman, um, talking with Rick, we're anticipating that they would build it and then recoup their money through their fees.
Yeah, I think that's usually the case, um, what they'll do, I mean, usually if you want steel poles or something, there's an upgrade, there's an upcharge. Uh, they'll do their regular wooden poles, but maybe they, maybe there's an upcharge on the steel poles.
Yeah, we'll.
That's, yeah, that's, it's their steel on the existing section, yeah. It's kind of up to West Star, I'm not sure what they are now, I think they work pretty well, the existing section, section works pretty well at night. Yeah, they don't put anything else in. I can't tell if I'm there.
I think the, uh, streetlights are, there's one on the, you know, there, I think they alternate.
Yeah, they do zigzag.
North and south.
Oh, yeah, they do.
One on the north side, one on the south side.
Yep.
Well, anyway, um, they design, West Star designs though, so you don't have dark, light and dark spots.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So to answer your question, there is no street lighting in the construction estimate.
Okay.
That I've shared with you.
Okay. Which is a good segue to the construction estimate, correct?
Construction estimate, so we, um, put in our estimate, sent it to Mike, um, the cost that we came up with is one point six million dollars. That includes a ten percent contingency. Um, so we anticipate it to be closer to one point five. We think, we think we have a pretty good handle on the quantities and the, the prices. Um, we're anticipating good prices for dirt work since there's no, it's just an open field. Um, the, there's not much traffic control, there's not, there aren't any driveways to worry about keeping open.
Yeah, so one point five is what we've always had in our, just in our budget, um, that's what, that's what Columbia Capital has been working toward for the bond issue, so. Um, yeah, it's looking like, uh, pretty much what we expected, so that's good, no surprise there.
Is there any fencing or, you know, on that, where you were looking, the widening and curve? Was there any fencing or government fencing?
We're, um, yeah, through the government easement part, there's fence going back in, I think on both sides, um.
Yeah, we're gonna have to.
That's gonna be a cost to us to.
Yeah, it'll be a cost of the project.
Okay, is that included in there?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, thank you.
I don't think we have the fence item in the estimate, um, but you're.
We have it in the plans, I know.
It is in the plans, um, so it's basically re, just closing that one, it's a hundred and forty-five foot corridor there from, uh, Sunflower. And so there'll be a three hundred foot of fencing.
Both sides have to.
One, half on each side.
Yeah.
Yes.
And eighteen foot back-to-back is the typical city section for a.
It, it meets, you know, the APWA for a commercial collector.
I guess from the cross-section, you'll strike the shoulders.
Mm-hmm, yeah, um, there's bike lanes striped, so where did I get it? Are the stripes on the bike, yeah, there. So eleven-foot lanes, five-foot bike lanes. Thirty-two foot section.
Okay, anybody have any questions on ninety-first street? Any discussions?
Joel, with the Latha Medical Center, were there documents in existence that just didn't get recorded or they were just?
I would bet there were documents, but I went, so we got the title reports and there was nothing mentioned in them, so. I, I went to the courthouse myself then to look to see if it was, uh, sometimes they'll throw them in miscellaneous if they're, uh, mis-referenced or something, and there's just nothing, so. Um, fortunately for Mike, it predates him. It's not Mike's fault that if they were documents.
I was just gonna say, if they, if they were aware, even if they're not recorded, if they were otherwise aware of those, it's, they're, they would still be, you know, recording just puts innocent, you know.
Yeah, makes everybody else aware.
Right, but if they were aware by other means, then.
But did you say it was an owner prior to?
It was an owner.
Yeah, the prior owner.
Had a copy been made, you know, Latha Medical Center may not have ever even ended up with.
Yeah.
They at least know there's a road in there.
They do know that.
Roads and pipes to there.
Yeah. Yeah, I think regardless, we're gonna have to get a temporary construction easement from them, if nothing else, so we'll have to, we'll have to be talking with them.
And they might as well clean it all up.
Yeah.
It's to their benefit as well, so that when they develop in the future, that's not a clouding issue.
I guess you would have presumed that they would have got an ALTA when they required, when they acquired it, and that ALTA should have shown.
Should have shown an encroachment.
An encroachment, exactly, and that.
That should have flagged some dissent, but there should be an encroachment shown on the ALTA.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, next project, this is, uh, K-ten and Lexington intersection. Signal modification, um, you all might not be as familiar with the details on this one. Um, so no. So we have, we're showing the, these, uh, ramps, I don't know if they're called out as future or by others, but you can kind of see where this crossing is gonna be. Um, this will be built with the ninety-first street project, the striping will as well. This ramp and the median cut will be built with ninety-first street. Construction, okay, so as far as the history of this, I think Mike has worked with KDOT for a long time, asking to make this into two lanes, kind of as we're shown here. Um, KDOT was reluctant to let us do that because, without widening, we're, uh, we're able to widen out for this right-turn lane and through lane, and it'll be on the existing shoulder. Um, but this'll, this'll, um, I think I'm out of juice here. Okay, so we'll have two lanes, um, from talking with Mike and, uh, Rick, it kind of, everybody kind of gravitates that way anyway, so this'll delineate the two lines. Um, KDOT has agreed to allow this on the signals, um. So now, they're, one of their main requirements for this is the eastbound and westbound traffic have to be split phase, meaning they're not gonna be, they're not gonna both be green at the same time anymore. So it's gonna be, once, you know, say, one, the eastbound traffic goes first, red light, then the westbound traffic gets to go. So this includes putting, there we go. So we have a left-turn signal here and a left-turn signal here, so in each direction, there'll be left, protected left turns. Um, we are not doing any work on the, uh, signals on Lexington, and that'll operate the same way as it always has, as a single phase. Um, so then this crossing, which one was it, Mike?
I think you were, the crossing to be.
When the westbound traffic's going, then you can cross.
That's right.
So there'll be no crossing when the eastbound traffic, so there'll be one phase where you can get across there. And we, we did traffic counts and ran it through some traffic software. Um, so we should have pretty good timing, um, to start with and see how that works, um, for this intersection.
Yeah, so, um, well, just recently, what's got us to this point was after a couple years of asking KDOT, and it really came down to the use of this shoulder. Uh, they were reluctant for maintenance purposes to allow us to stripe in that shoulder, and I guess I understand those are typically thinner sections, but, um, the last point I made was people are using that shoulder and have been for, ever since the light went in, and it's fine, so. They essentially agreed to that, um, the other thing, remember that they said was that next year, they're gonna be doing an overlay project on the main line, K-ten. Uh, and they hadn't planned on overlaying, milling and overlaying the off-ramps, but they offered to, to do that potentially uh, with, uh, with that, do this off-ramp with that, so there's maybe some coordination that we need to follow up with on that. But that's a, that's a pretty big project for KDOT, they're gonna be milling and overlaying K-ten from, I'm not sure where they start, they go to the county line and.
I think the county lines, right, so where will it end to?
Yeah, I don't, I guess, yeah, I don't know where they end, I guess, I'm not sure.
What about, um, detection?
Yeah, so, uh, the plans have an, an alternate for a camera system on the east-west. On the east-west, the north-south has never given us any trouble, the east-west has constantly given us trouble. Um, so, yeah, there's an add alternate for.
So, yeah, we, and that's just on this direction right here.
Oh, it's just the one direction?
Yeah.
We can add it for all, actually, we could do an add alternate for each, you know.
For each leg or something?
Yeah, because it's equipment and wiring, I mean, it's not a big deal.
I, I looked on a couple, um, I can't remember where I found it, maybe some old KDOT bid tabs, but we are probably, well, we're estimating fifteen thousand dollars to get video detection for that east, eastbound. Um, and I think doing the whole intersection on a new signal plan is probably forty to fifty thousand.
That's a pretty penny, we're.
You've got counts that would prioritize where to put the extra cost for cameras.
I think we're putting the cameras here because we have failure on that loop, that's the only reason, it's not whether, it's not counted related. It's, it's because that loop is a problem loop and we were not getting consistent detection there. That's why the, the video was presented as an alternate.
So and the signal controller that is gonna be running off of detection as opposed to time?
Oh, yeah, always, yeah. Um, and Joel, you, Rick, you guys probably know, I, last I heard, the jury's kind of still out on, you know, some people really like the video detection, some people, it's got some quirks to it that some don't like, so. Yeah, that's the coordination we're gonna, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's the issue with the loops, but, um.
I, you know, I, I think they're still working pretty good, I mean, I don't, I'm, heavy snow, heavy rain, you know, they're, uh, they have trouble picking out vehicles.
Yeah, that's so, yeah.
I don't know, sometimes they lose a motorcycle because they'll, if it's too small, it doesn't pick it up as a.
Well, a loop will do that, too.
Yeah.
It just forty grand seems like a lot.
Yeah.
No more than we need.
So the next step on this project is, um, we've been working on the details pretty hard this week. We need to get a permit from KDOT to do this work, um. So we want it to look as KDOT-y as possible, to push this, uh, push their approval through.
All your fonts, right?
Exactly. And all the Quandie sheets, all the reference, yeah.
Oh, yeah, not at all, there is, there it is.
So. Um, yeah, so this job, we're adding the, adding two signal heads, um, there's striping, signing.
Head heads and pad buttons.
Pad heads, so we'll have, I believe, a ten-foot, um, pole here that'll have the signal heads and the push buttons on it. Over here, we're putting, I think these two corners, we're putting the, the signal heads on the post.
Oh, we can't put them on the post on the other corner?
It's, yeah, it's too far from the ramp, so. You know, the push buttons, there's the ADA, uh, compliance, so it needs to be, so on the, like, this northeast and northwest corners, um, we'll have the little five-foot push buttons. So the heads can be on the poles in this corner and in this corner, but the poles are too far from the ramps, so we'll just run a little bit of conduit and wire to those ramps, um, and get them in the right spot so you can, so they can reach, I think it's six inches or something from the sidewalk.
Okay.
So I guess it just occurred to me when you said that, uh, the, another advantage that we're giving this, kind of this whole area is overall ADA accessibility or that really exists right now.
Yeah, it'll be.
Or not just ADA, but.
Pedestrian, yeah, pedestrian accessibility, yeah.
You know, wheelchair, whatever it may be, accessibility that doesn't exist.
Right.
And it can, connects, you know, the activity center of the commercial area with the activity center of the school. So, and we know that there's a need there.
Yeah, when this, uh, when this signal, when the signals were originally installed, there was a lot of, uh, extra wire for future signals and future pedestrians, so.
Yeah, it was good, they did plan, they planned for the pedestrian heads on the initial installation, so there were, uh.
And the mast arms are long enough, if you, next time you're there, you can see there's an extra, it's probably six foot or so from where the, where the signal heads are now, so there's a spot for it right at the end, we don't have to replace the mast arms or anything. So it was planned out well in, the first time, during the first construction, so.
All right.
Any more, anybody have any questions on the signals on the intersection?
Cost, you wanna talk about?
Oh, cost, yeah. So, we, um, coworker, Andrew Robertson, he contacted Mid-American Signal to kind of get it, and we sent some preliminary plans to him, and they were able to put together a schedule of materials for us, so we feel like we have a pretty good, um, pretty good numbers, at least on the cost for the material, um. And we put that, so we, of course, added for labor and installation for the contractor. So just for everything except the video detection, our total was forty-two thousand five hundred dollars. Um, the add alternate, which is that video detection for the eastbound traffic, was almost sixteen thousand dollars. Um, so with the add alternate, it's fifty-eight thousand five hundred dollars.
We budgeted fifty-five thousand, but that included the engineering, so, um, the engineering's about twenty, so budgeted about thirty-five, really, for the construction. And it's two thousand nineteen CIP budget, but, you know, we decided to move forward with it. This one's small enough, it's really gonna depend on workload of contractors on bid day.
Right.
And some of it, you don't really know till you get the bids.
I think one time, we, we might discuss offline or what, maybe we combine the bid of this with the Cars project.
Yeah.
And we, maybe we do have the discussion of whether or not this could be included in the Cars.
Yeah, yeah, even if it's not included, package it together.
Exactly, pack she, package them together, um.
That's a good idea.
And then.
Could always package it together in a way that the signal could be taken out, it felt like the signal was being overpriced by a route contractor.
Right, the general's throwing a bunch, he doesn't want to deal with it and he's.
Right, so he's throwing a bunch of money, parcel it out and did it separate.
Yep.
Yeah. The danger would be the low bid on the overall has a high component for this.
Yeah.
Yep.
So are you looking for council temperature, if you will, on the willingness to spend the money on the video detection?
No, not really.
Otherwise you're pretty close to budget, or are you wanting to go into an engineering decision?
True, um, well, I think that decision we'll have, you know, maybe after we get the bids back and we see what they are. You know, that's usually when we, that's usually when we have that discussion, if we're over, if we're under, we talk about that, about the. Whether or not we want to do the, the add alternate or, or the project at all, so you know.
The other benefit of doing bidding them together is if the bigger project happened to come in lower, and this one was a little higher, then we could make that decision a little easier.
Yeah, you combine, mash them together, yeah, yeah.
Even if we did bid them separate, you know, as two little packages, you know, just bid them at the.
We don't, we don't really have any action item for you. We just wanted to give you an update and answer any questions you might have and make sure everybody is aware of the direction we're going. If it was anything other than you expected, then uh, this is an opportunity to hear it. Yeah, it's coming together pretty well. So Joel will be submitting to KDOT real soon on this one.
Yes, I was talking with Andrew, uh, he's kind of our tra, well, he is our traffic guy, one of our traffic experts. And he thinks we could, I think mid-next week, we could send something.
Okay.
I can, I'll send you an updated set tomorrow. I think we have even more updated than what I just gave you today.
Okay.
Um, and then make sure you, we get your blessing, um, and then send it to KDOT.
Okay, sounds good.
We can push that on.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you, Joel.
All right, thank you.
Are you staying for the rest of the meeting, Joel?
Yeah, I wouldn't miss. Okay, thank you.
All right, consider bids for backup pool pump.
Backup pool pump, yes, council. Um, every year we allocate some uh, maintenance funding for the aquatic center that is just not really specified. This year Jay didn't use a whole lot of it, so he's got um, close to sixty-seven hundred dollars left over. Um, and he saw that as an opportunity to maybe head off a problem that could occur with us. The pool, it'll be. What is it, fourteenth year? What did I say in here? I think it's a fourteenth year of operation of the pool. Um, and the main recirculation pump that runs the filter and everything, twenty-five horsepower pump. Uh, we don't have any reason to believe it's going out, but getting in the fourteen, fifteen-year range on a pump like that is pretty close to its life expectancy. If that pump goes down, a similar pump would have a couple of months lead time to purchase one. So basically, if it hap, if it goes down in the season, um, our season would be over. So uh, Jay wants to, and I think it's a good idea, to buy a replacement pump, set it on the shelf for that day, when and if that happens. So we got some pricing from our main pump supplier, Douglas Pump has been providing our municipal pumps for decades. They gave us a pricing on several different sizes of pumps and several different manufacturers. The fifteen, or the twenty-five horsepower pumps are priced out on the second sheet. Uh, the name, the, the brand that's in there is a Marlow pump. If we went with either of the other two brands, we'd have to do some rewiring and maybe some replumbing because they're not exactly the same. So in the end, when you add those wiring costs or the plumbing costs and the extra time, downtime, actually, the Marlow would be the cheapest. So we're asking for your approval to buy that Marlow pump uh for fifty-eight, forty, and twenty-five cents. One thing I did want to bring to your attention, initially when we spoke with Douglas Pump, they acted, or we got the impression that the warranty could be. It's only a one-year warranty, that it could be delayed until we actually installed the pump. Manufacturer won't allow that. So we're just gonna have to live with the thing that it's, it's just gonna not have a warranty the day we put it in. But Douglas Pump says there's no reason to believe that that'll be a problem. It doesn't hurt them to sit on the shelf. Um, so we're, we're comfortable enough proceeding, even without the one-year warranty. So if you agree with all that, um, I'd like to have your approval to make that purchase.
Questions for Mike?
I have one.
Sure.
Uh, can this, after we put this pump in, is there a chance to rebuild the old one or are they rebuildable?
Yeah, actually, that's, that's a good question. Um, that would be the plan. If the old one goes out, we'd put the new one in and immediately take the old one to Douglas Pump. Cause yeah, nine times out of ten, they can be rebuilt, yeah.
And then it would be our backup.
And then it's the backup.
Okay, thank you. So you say, you know, if a pump that's going to go out, that's kind of the end of the season because of lead time. Are there, is there some commonality between pumps at other aquatic centers that, you know, you could?
Oh, if we could borrow one from somebody?
You can buy it.
Yeah.
Right.
If they've got one.
A pooled backup pump?
Uh, good question. I, you know, I, I don't know.
You would order in a, in a pinch, if you go, hey Shawnee, you got, you got any pumps around that are about this that we can pump that in?
I, I can't answer that.
Or the opposite being the case, that is this, do we let other communities know that if they need a pump and they need it in a hurry, they can buy ours and we can buy a new pump?
Yeah, um, that's a good question. I can't answer it. Um. I can't imagine we put something in there that's just completely oddball that nobody else has anywhere, but.
Twenty-five horse pump at an aquatic center, this is pretty standard.
Yeah, I, I can't answer that either.
Just curious.
Yeah. Well, then I'll make a motion to authorize approval of the um, backup pump as requested.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Daniels?
Yes.
Yes.
Murdoch?
Yes.
John Michael?
Yes.
Council, what's your name here?
Thank you. Uh, four D, discuss summer concert series.
All right, this is, this is fun stuff here, summer concert series. Uh, we were at the mayor's dinner last night. We were treated to Four Chickens and a Coke. Which is one of the artists that are on the list here.
Four fried chickens and a Coke, is there a fish in that?
Is that right?
Yes.
Got it wrong.
That's all right.
All right.
It's all right.
Yeah, so Mayor Walker brought this up in October about, you know, the idea of a summer concert series. And so we've dove into that a little bit at the staff level, um, got Jay and Justin involved, Lana was helping out too, and Kathy as well. Just kind of get our hands around what it would take, what it would cost, what sort of event we want to put on. And so I just have a little outline of kind of where we landed, or at least where we are right now. Want to get your feedback on this um, before we go forward, because we're gonna need to start. Um, you know, if not before the first of the year, then very soon after, booking artists, because uh, some of these do fill up. So we want to get that process started, but we wanted to have this conversation before we get too far, too much further. Um, so I've laid out just some of the parameters here and I'll just go through them quickly. Um, I don't want to just rehash the staff report for you, but I'll just read through them as we go. Um, the schedule, I think in, I think the original idea was to have a series of four concerts each weekend in June. Discussing that, we thought it might be better to spread those out over the course of the summer. Uh, first of all, because uh, June is a very busy month for the Parks Department. And yeah, it'd be pretty taxing to have four, four concerts, you know, one after another for that, just in that month. Uh, we think maybe the public might have a little fatigue with the concerts if they're each, each weekend. So we've suggested spreading those out. We actually have, um, Jay worked. Worked a little bit on, on getting these specific dates, because we have other events to schedule around and other things going on regionally. So we've come up with four dates. May seventeenth would be a Friday, uh, June seventh is a Friday. And June seventh is the one that Matt Snook specifically said he would hold for us, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that date was kind of set. The July one, we're thinking the fourth, fifth, or sixth, so the July fourth is a Thursday. Um, we, we kind of kicked around, Lana, if I refresh my memory on this, if, if I'm wrong. But we kicked around the idea of not having the fourth on the fourth, having our fireworks and our big celebration on Friday or Saturday. Uh, maybe to increase participation in that event, because it's mid-week. Um, but also to, you know, to get the artists here, um, because a lot of the artists would be booked up on the fourth itself. Uh, so we could combine, you know, we, we, we have, we could combine this concert with, with that event. And then the fourth one would be in September thirteenth or fourteenth. We chose to stay shy away from August because DeSoto Days happens in August and uh, August is hot. So we might think about skipping August. We also talked about a movie night, just in addition to this, you know, just having maybe just a movie night either in Miller Park or maybe uptown somewhere. In addition to this series. Uh, the movie night is something that could be done pretty cheaply. And wouldn't take a whole lot of preparation. In terms of an event size, we talked about, I, I think it was just during the discussion about Matt Snook's event was. Would range from three to five thousand dollars um, for that event. So we use that as our base for kind of a budget for each of the four events. And we think doing that and with the artists that we kind of have on the shortlist, we might draw somewhere between two, two to four hundred people. I think four hundred would probably be on the really high end of that. Two hundred people would probably be a good goal to shoot for. Um, of course, there would be more at the Fourth of July. Um, and we're talking about a concert that's about two hours in length. So these would be free concerts. We'd invite food vendors, you know, the truck vendors would, would be invited, the more the better. Um, you know, if we can have two to four hundred people there with a decent band that draws well, and the vendors know that, then we might get more than a couple of vendors. But the, the goal would be to get at least two, so people could buy their own food and drink from there. Uh, we'd allow people to bring in their own, of course, bring their own food if they wanted to, but also bring in alcohol if they wished to the park. Uh, we, we kicked around the idea of offering free food, you know, a free hot dogs, hamburgers sort of thing. Or maybe even something a little bit nicer than that, barbecue or something, but that really, that really blows the budget um, way out of the water. The venue we discussed, Riverfest Park is the obvious one, you know, it's all set up, uh, it, it would be the easiest thing to do. But there was some talk about having something downtown, um, uptown, I guess, in the, in the downtown area. Um, we'd have to rent a stage there, we'd have to figure out the power. But I, you know, it might be a kind of a neat change of, just change of scenery to have one, you know, in the downtown area. But the cost we're putting together, we didn't cost out getting a stage or, or any of that at this point. Um, artists and production, you see the list of artists there. They're ranging from seven hundred bucks up to thirty-five or even fifty-eight hundred, I'm not sure would be able to do that. But um, we do have reason to believe that a lot of these costs are somewhat negotiable. Uh, we know that these bands on this list play other venues for less than this. As a matter of fact, Four Chickens and a Coke, uh, Lana tells me did that last night for a thousand bucks. Um, so you know, two thousand might be twice as much. It, I, probably similar story on the rest of these. They probably could be obtained for a little bit less maybe, but for now, we're just kind of leaving that as a uh. Budget item there. Um, the other thing is most of these acts don't come with their own lights or sound systems. So that'd be something we'd have to rent and provide for most of these, and that's not cheap. Um. Sarah says that her stuff she gets for Night on the Cause about fifteen hundred dollars, which is a decent, Night on the Cause is a bigger event, you know. And so it was a decent sound system, a good light system. Um, she did have to provide volunteers to unload those trucks and load them after the event. The, the sound system doesn't, they'll set it up, but they want, they want labor to lug the stuff on and off the truck. So that's a little bit of a complication there, too. We talked about hiring a production company. There's a few of them in the area that you can kind of establish sort of a relationship with. And they have their own pool of talent that they could, they could use, but really for what we're talking about, um. It's just not that complicated. I don't think we really need that sort of expertise and it might just come with an extra cost. You know, we, we could look into it a little further, but I, I think we'd be able to do this with no more than we're talking about, probably able to do it without the production company. So the budget, um, with the exception of the Fourth of July, I, you know, throw a budget there, one to three thousand dollars for the artists and stage and sound. We're gonna need to rent portable toilets, um, probably have some staff overtime, security lighting. Um, this is like for the parking lot outside the venue, this wouldn't be for the stage lighting. And then a dumpster. So we're looking at fifty-three to seventy-three hundred bucks uh, per event for four events. So you're looking at twenty to thirty thousand dollars. This would probably be a good use of that four hundred and, four hundred and fifty thousand dollar unspecified initiatives in the, in next year's budget. So um, so that's where we're at. Want to offer, get any feedback, answer any questions you might have? We probably have questions. That's kind of where we're at.
I can tell you, so, I mean, so from my thoughts, um, certainly a lot more than I was considering spending on, you know, something like this. From, from where I was, from the, when I was proposing this, um, yeah. The reason why I liked, and I think I was, I wasn't proposing four in June, I was proposing three in June. The reason I was thinking three in June is the best weather, the longest day, so the least light, yeah, or the, you know, the lighting's better. To me, it just, I mean, and, and then if you can establish that that's the month of the, then you could perhaps get follow-up um, participation. I mean, if it becomes an event that somebody knows that every Friday night in June, or these three Friday nights in June, that you're gonna have that event. Then, then it becomes something in somebody's mind that they can go to. I think scattering them around the year, or you know, it, it, um, then. If it's a series that you're doing through a stretch, then you have like one promotional um, campaign. If you've got a bunch of inde, in, uh, independent events, then you're promoting individual events and um. Uh, what else would I think and? I know Matt Snook comes with his own sound, so that the, his feet would include sound, but not probably stage lighting.
And we've been told he'll play for a whole lot less than that and does. That might be an option to ask too.
Yeah. I um, I'd also, I have talked to a couple of the banks. I haven't talked to all the banks in town or all the other businesses. But I have secured um, commitments for donations from the business community to support the event. And I, um, what I was talking to them about was a free concert series in, in, you know, the summer months. That would be beneficial to, or possibly, you know, something their employees could go to, or they would have advertising event at. I don't know, those are just some of my thoughts. I would rather, I, I think the May seventeenth is too soon. I don't, I don't like the, I'm. Still got school going on, you got a lot of in the.
Actually, May seventeenth is DHS graduation weekend.
There's just a lot, um, yeah. And I know that the July fourth, we already have the thing going, you know, um. That weekend, so I think that was what I was thinking. We already kind of have that thing going on July fourth. And then if we picked, you know, some weekend or some Friday nights leading up to that, then that would, what, what would provide the series. So we would add three events to what we were.
So July fourth would be the, the last one.
Exactly, that was uh.
Well, I like the thought, I like the idea. I think it's a great community type activity for a small community. When you're throwing out the, you know, some ideas on some bands, what, I don't know, what was Four Chickens and a Coke play? I mean, what's their genre? Are they country or are they cover or are they?
They're a little bit more jazzy in some ways.
Extra trumpet players and saxophone players.
Trombone.
Trumpets, trombone.
I think of Blues Brothers.
Blues Brothers, just a little bit of everything.
Cover stuff.
A lot of cover stuff, uh, a lot of. I don't know what you call it. It was, uh, actually, the, the Four Fried Chickens and a Coke is a line out of the Blues Brothers, which is what they took their name from.
Oh, gotcha.
They, they had pretty broad appeal.
Yeah, they were.
Yeah, that's what I'm wanting, you know.
They were a good fun.
What appealing to, I, I like that at the end you put engaging the park board. I don't know if this has come up through park board yet. If it's been on their radar.
It was supposed to have gone to the park board the third, Monday, but because.
Yeah, but as a community activity, I think it'd be really good to get, make sure the park boards kind of weighing in and throwing their ideas in on it, you know. Mentioned um, uh, graduation weekend, you know, in May. I think um, this year, homecoming was September fifteenth, you got September thirteen, fourteen. So we obviously got to look at conflicts, and I think the Parks Board is also a broader group to think of those kinds of things that might conflict. I was thinking of um, Treads and Threads is in September. Uh, I don't know how much DeSoto community goes to that. Or Overland Park Stems is.
Community goes to that, or Overland Park Stems is in July, you know, thinking of some of those other kind of community draws. But, other than that, I like it being, I like it being spread out a little bit, because this is just purely selfish, but it may affect some of the other groups, you know, June's baseball season, right? So, you're going to get, particularly on Friday nights, families may not, you know, whatever the sport may be, you may kind of.
In our league, in our league, our local stuff, there's no games on Friday nights. So, you know, DeSoto baseball doesn't, so it's a off night for our.
For local. Because I'd like to get it to where you can get as much appeal as you can. You know, the Parks Board may weigh in opinions on what's better, Friday nights or Saturday nights, in that regard also. Work, you know, an evening after work or a Saturday. I like the concept of the idea.
I guess thoughts on budget. The 21 to 30, $29,000, I guess, is, where do we, what are our thoughts on that? Any input on?
Well, if we're going to start doing community things, we have to just start to bring them into budget. I mean, I think it's important. I think we want it for our community. You know, I think we probably can get some sponsorship help on some of it, which would help with, you know, the budgeting on there. And I think if we really kind of narrow things down, you know, I think we can work probably on that low end of that budget, if we have to. I mean, number one, doing three of them. And, I mean, I like the idea of staying at Riverfest. I think that, I mean, that, too, will save a little bit on budget. The consistency, I think, is the reason for that. You know, I like, I mean, that's the wrong with going uptown and doing something up there. It's just, you know, it just, if you can get to the same routine, it's easier to set up, easier to do everything when you know it's the same every time, you know. And, but, you know, I think we can, you know, we've got that unspecified. And if, you know, we like how it works, then we work it into our budget next year, for the next year.
Yeah, I think it's worth, you know, investing to see if you get it off the ground and see what kind of appeal it gets. And
What kind of participation?
What kind of participation. Because I think if you get decent participation, then you're going to be able to get sponsorship. And then you can begin to figure out, is there other, you know, are there food vendors that can come set up, and that can pay to have to be a part of it or something? You know, I know there's other Wine Song, you know, there's other kinds of events, and sometimes they kind of run their course, maybe. They get off strong. Maybe we try it and figure out what works. And if it doesn't, well, you don't do it anymore. But I think it's worth putting a little bit into to try it, and then see if it gains some momentum. And what do we learn from the ones that we do do, you know, in terms of timing, or the kind of band that it might be, or the location? I agree with the point of making some consistency in location, but it's also kind of cool to do things at Miller Park, too, you know, a little more, or wherever, you know, a little more complicated. So, I think it's worth at least a try. And I think it's going to take a little bit of investment to give it a try.
Don't make a half-hearted attempt, then. Give it every chance to be successful.
Yeah, give it a chance.
Put the resources necessary.
But also don't feel like we're signing up for a 10-year commitment.
Yeah.
Right? If it works, it works. And if it doesn't, well, you try something different.
We'll know a lot more after that first one.
I'll be real, I'll be real interested, though, to hear what the folks on the Parks Board think of it.
So, it sounds like the June, the June series, we need to head that.
Well, I agree with that.
I disagree a little bit with Kevin. I'd like to see it in the month of June and then end of July. And because, the only reason is, when we do like the art council stuff and stuff, and we pick these dates, we look at the other towns and what all they've got going on, and June, July, and August, all the way to September, and the bookings of even food vendors and stuff, these guys are going out a year in advance, as well as you, probably some of your artists are. But, and it's complicated that way. And I think if you guys concentrated within that deal, then your promotion for that June and then end of July, and I think it'd be more acceptable than to spread it out and lose people the months when graduation and other things are going on, and you start losing stuff in the fall.
Yeah, I agree with you on that, Danny. I like to stick into June and/or July if we need to do it.
I like sticking to June, early into July. May is just typically an insane month for everybody. I like the idea of consistency, although I would love to see a downtown street event.
I was thinking our DeSoto Brass Band would be great downtown, between Cokers and the Bank, and we could come up with a stage there and close the street.
And if, the other thing, I mean, if you did that, you might be able to have sponsorship of the downtown businesses providing some free food on that one, maybe. Because like, Great American does their Customer Appreciation Day, where not expensive food, but you might get some sponsorship there. But, I mean, getting a street event sometime throughout the year, and this may be an ideal time to at least have one of them in the downtown to help promote that area. I mean, one of the things I thought about earlier on before this was like a Cinco de Mayo festival in the downtown street area, but this would be an opportunity. So, consistency with it is good, but at some point, I'd like to see at least some street event in downtown to help promote it.
Yeah, I'd totally support a street event. I mean, it kind of reminds me of my old hometown. They used to have Midnight Madness, you know, and they closed down the main street, and you had a band, and it was a blast.
They had a, one of the food truck, one of the first Harvest Fest was downtown, and they did that. And then they obviously moved out, or tried to, because I don't know if it's happened since then, because of the weather always.
It happened once.
Okay, so, they moved it. But, but the whole food truck thing wouldn't even have to be associated with these. But, you know, maybe say in another month, you try, not that we as a city would have to support it either. It could be somebody else that we try to get to kind of lead that up. But, you know, Food Truck Fridays through, you know, certain times. And even at that, you know, it wouldn't have to be a real live band at that event. You could have some kind of DJ type thing, or you could, like you said, have some other. So, I mean, there's a lot of possibilities with that type of event going on downtown, which would be really neat. And I know Kim Bedford has talked about that a lot, and has a lot of ideas. And so, I would think you could get something like that happening, if we just find the right group to maybe put one of them on.
So, the first Harvest Fest was kind of a food truck crawl, wasn't it?
Yeah. And those are, you know, that, it's kind of neat, you know. If you could get it set up. But, you know, the big thing with that is finding the time when those food trucks.
Are available and want to come.
Nothing else big's going on, yeah.
But I have one other question about the event that you're talking about. Is the whole alcohol part of that? Because alcohol's not really allowed in the park, correct?
We, we have Riverfest designated in the city code that as long as the council says it's okay.
Okay.
And under the statutes, like, for example, city halls and other, so we've got city hall, and then any outdoor park is authorized with council approval.
Okay.
But otherwise, you're right. Alcohol, generally speaking, is not allowed on any public property.
Okay.
What do we think about the alcohol?
Well, I mean, I'm not against alcohol, because if I'm going to go down there, I'm going to have it with me, whether it's, you know, whether it's in, you know, this is iced tea bag in my rum. But, you know, but, but if it's legal, I think that's good. But I think it's one of those that I, I don't, trying to make it kind of a family event, I wouldn't like maybe make a big deal about that.
Oh, so, don't advertise it.
I mean, don't advertise anything about the alcohol. And if people are, if they bring a cooler or something, it's okay. They're not going to get turned away. But we're not like trying to promote people to come down there and get toasted at a family event at the park. Does that make sense? I mean, because it's like, that's what has happened at various other events. And it's just kind of frustrating when it becomes more about that than just listening to music for a couple hours. But, one more thought. Well, maybe one more, but maybe two more.
Yeah, the other thing on alcohol, that may change the level of law enforcement that would need to be available and present.
Yeah, yeah.
That's true. Security. The only thing that you guys had in there that we didn't talk about, other than food trucks, which is a good idea, is the movie night thing. And, you know, the Methodist Church, I think it was, has had a couple of movie nights at the park already. So, you know, maybe working with them, and maybe even pulling in the Baptist Church, and maybe seeing if that would be maybe a good August
Right.
community event that we do. And just kind of, you know, maybe that would be a way to spread it out a little bit more and bring Miller Park into it. And maybe that could be something down at Miller Park, because I think that's where they've had that event in the past, if I'm not mistaken. And, you know, kind of growing on what they've already got started on that, and kind of supporting that might be a good idea, instead of trying to make that one of these type of things.
Yeah, or even on that one, could have one at the pool that's a float, movie night.
I think Jay's done the
He may have done something like that.
Right, right.
Yeah, whatever, the dive-in theater, they called it or something.
Yeah, that's a good idea, too.
I think they've done that before.
So, I'll just make one more comment, too. And that's, I want to echo your idea on Cinco de Mayo. I think that's another cool community opportunity that, you've mentioned it before. I really like that idea as well. Something different that can appeal to the community as well. So, I'd like to keep that in the mix.
Who used to put that on? We used to have a big Cinco de Mayo.
And, and, our council, gosh, he's my neighbor, was the big promoter of that, the ham radio operator on the hill.
Duke, Duke!
Duke's, it was Duke's thing, right? He liked.
Was, that's right.
He always, he wanted to promote the
They moved it? Or it quit?
Well, one of the Valenzuela people moved, and then we talked to them, and then everybody kind of just, they moved it to another location, another city, because they thought they had more people there to attend, and it was a larger community to support the event.
Well, this might be a great time to think for our next budget year, is to possibly think about bringing somebody into our staffing that works on community outreach type events and programs. Because this is just a start of what that person could be doing when you start talking about Facebook and all this different thing. I mean, it may not even be a full-time position. It wouldn't probably be something that would be a high salary position. But it's definitely something that, there are a lot of things that a person that is geared, you could keep them busy with something like that. So.
Yeah. Well, that's, that's
But until we have that, it's hard to do too many things that are too stretched out, unless you get organizations that could kind of help out with you.
Well, good. Well, we'll have a similar discussion with the Park Board and bring it back. We may even bring it back at the next meeting, to kind of fill you guys in on what the Park Board discussed and move forward. So, I think that's good feedback.
Okay.
It's good. That'll be fun.
Yeah. Next time, receive traffic study for intersection of 91st and Lexington.
Yes, council. We, at the last planning commission meeting, we approved a 438-unit apartment complex, Class A apartments, $55 million project. And some of the discussions centered around traffic, as you might, you might guess. This year, we actually, KDOT funded a traffic study of 91st and Lexington Avenue. And I think the concerns there are well-known. And, you know, they center around school traffic in the morning and in the afternoon. So, we applied for and received this grant. KDOT has a pool of traffic engineers that do that sort of thing. And the one that did this one was WSP Engineering. They did, they did that throughout, throughout this year, actually finalized it several months ago. And I just, I just never brought it forward to you guys to look at the results. But I included the whole traffic study in your staff report. I asked you specifically if you're not interested in reading the whole thing, which I don't know why you wouldn't be, but to read the executive summary, the first six, six pages of that, of that document. Really, they did a very thorough job at, you know, they redid the traffic counts, you know, so they got current traffic counts on a school day. They went out and observed the traffic patterns on a couple of school mornings, had, even had a picture of a near-miss incident that occurred there while they were there. They also projected traffic patterns for the next 20 years, based on the development that might occur. At the time they did the study, we didn't know anything that, about the apartment complex. But regardless, they did, they did apply some reasonable growth, traffic growth, demand estimates to that, and gave us a snapshot of a 2040 traffic, traffic pattern. In essence, the study recommends, they looked at many options, but they've recommended some low-cost options and really a high-cost option. The low-cost option, they did look at, you know, the recommendation on the low-cost option really centered around restricting left-turn movements on the eastbound leg. So, you're coming up to Lexington, you're driving on 91st Street, you're headed eastbound up to Lexington, and you want to make a left. That's the biggest problem that we have. Essentially, there is about 15 or 20 minutes every morning where it basically is not possible to make a left turn there, because you have northbound traffic that's on Lexington Avenue, making a left turn onto 91st Street that you have to yield to. And that traffic stacks up all the way back to the traffic signal for about 15 or 20 minutes every day. So, in essence, for a left turner, if you're wanting to turn left and go north on Lexington, you can't do it until all that traffic clears, which takes 15 or 20 minutes. So, what's happening is people are cutting in front of those, of those people. And that's really what's causing the near misses at the intersection. Some of the findings that they, they looked at, crash data for the last five-year period. This is not one that is, that is terribly concerning from a crash accident standpoint, because most of the other times during the day, the intersection functions just fine. There were eight crashes there over that period. Seven of them occurred either during the AM or the PM peak period when school was getting out, I mean, as, as we can, as you could have predicted. So, the recommended improvements, I started to describe them. They recommend as a low-cost option, restricting eastbound left turn movements during the AM peak hour. Basically, don't allow people to come on 90th Street and turn left. That'd take signage, it'd take law enforcement, it'd only work if you had compliance. But it'd work perfectly if you had compliance. They said that'd only, that'd only inconvenience about 30 people a day. That, to me, sounded really low. But, that's what, that's what they observed. The second recommendation had some pedestrian improvements. And we'll skip through the pictures here in just a minute, kind of step through some of those. But then, the ultimate recommendation that they have was actually the highest cost, and it has to do with the roundabout. They're looking at two, two roundabouts. One's a single lane, and the other's a two-lane. The current traffic patterns as they exist today, the single-lane roundabout would have the capacity to keep the level of service at an acceptable level, although the 20-year traffic demands would require a two-lane roundabout. When they look at these things, they look at cost, cost ratios, you know, anything over, or cost-benefit ratios. Anything over one is kind of a recommended, recommendable approach. The single-lane roundabout still does have a cost-benefit ratio over one, so it would be technically recommendable today. The two-lane roundabout drops slightly below 1.0. But the thing about a roundabout is, if you put it in before you need it, you don't do really any harm. And that's as opposed to a traffic signal. Of course, they did, a lot of this report looks again at the traffic signal warrants. And there's seven or eight different criteria they look at. Current traffic levels do not, still don't warrant a traffic signal. And that's important, because I think we said before, if you, if you put a traffic signal in before you really need it, then you have done more harm than good. You delay people, otherwise, don't need to be delayed, you may cause accidents that don't need to, otherwise would not occur. So, that's the recommended approach. There are some pedestrian access, and we talked about with Joel a little bit, with the, with the 91st Street plans, the pedestrian issues here. They are recommending, and this really doesn't have much to do with the intersection function and the backups and the congestion, but just as a safety measure, some pedestrian improvements that would include, they call it a pedestrian refuge island here, just north of the intersection shown here, in that, I'm not sure what figure this is, the first one, that, that green area that would allow easier pedestrian crossing. You go halfway, then you can sit there and wait for another gap in the, in the, in the traffic. This figure here, shown on, what sheet is that? Sheet five. Sheet five shows a roundabout. This would be a single-lane roundabout. So in this, in this scenario, um, coming southbound into the intersection would split into two lanes. The right one be a right turn only. So essentially, the southbound right lane wouldn't even enter the roundabout and you just continue onto 91st Street. The left lane would continue onto the, in, in the roundabout and you could essentially, you could go straight through or I guess you could flip a U-turn and go back the way you came. So that's a single, single-lane roundabout. Approaching from the south, there's one lane, um, and approaching from the east, the west, there's one lane. This one, like we mentioned, works okay for the current level of traffic, but would be very congested and for the future 20-year projections. The figure on the next page then shows a two-lane roundabout configuration. This one would work well for the 20-year traffic projections. Two lanes coming in from the north, just like, uh, we described with the one-lane roundabout. Two lanes coming in from the east and two lanes coming in from the south. On the south, if you're in the left lane, um, it shows a left turn only. So basically, you would be channeling into the inside lane, which would take you left, uh, onto 91st Street. And the right lane essentially would be a through in that, in that scenario. The roundabout is priced at just over a million dollars. So kind of wanted to get this in front of you because here in January, we're going to start CAPA CIP update. And then, you know, that'll roll into our budgeting discussions and, you know, that typically start in February or March. Another work product of the, of the study was, were these, uh, these videos. And I don't know if you had a chance to have a look at those. What happened to my video here? That was it. Well, we'll just pull up another one. There, you see, this, this is the list of the videos, uh, kind of a three-dimensional rendering, live-action sort of, uh, how this thing looks. Did everybody, have, have a chance to look at those? Okay. There's several scenarios for single lane and for two-lane. The first one I'm going to show you is for a two-lane roundabout with the current traffic volumes in the afternoon. So that's what, that's how this would function, two-lane roundabout, current volumes in the afternoon. Hopefully, this doesn't take all evening to pull up. And it speaks for itself, so I'm gonna just be quiet.
And it will zoom in in a minute.
Yeah, it does zoom in.
Those are kids getting out of school.
Yeah, there's no, yeah, um, they don't show pedestrians here. That's the other thing about a roundabout. It's always, the pedestrian part of a roundabout intersection is probably the trickiest part. You know, you, they, they try to get the crossings a little bit away from the intersection, but there's no, like, walk signal or stop sign for anybody. You just have to wait for a break in the traffic.
Good thing is the traffic's slower.
Yeah.
You have plenty of refuge spaces.
And you have, right, you have generally shorter crossing distances, yeah.
So that's how, and then the other thing, if we get a, a big truck come through here, I'm not sure when that happens.
There's one in this, one I think.
Yeah, there, I think they throw them in, in each one. But you do see this, um, this red part in here in the center is a mountable curb where semis, that's just how they have to get through the intersect, their trailer wheels come up over this curb and they. We'll see one. We'll see one in the next scenario.
Pretty quick after the bus, as I remember.
Yeah, here he is. So you'll see he's coming around taking a left and you'll see his back wheels mount that curb and go into that. And that's how they function.
All cattle out to Merck.
Yeah. So that's, um, that's with current traffic. I don't know if, I'm not going to show you all these, but I did want to show you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wanted to show you a single-lane one with, uh, the same scenario, same traffic scenario. This is a single-lane roundabout. So it's still current traffic levels at the afternoon peak.
When is, when is the afternoon peak?
Um, right around when the school gets out, like 3:15.
Yeah, 2:30 to 3:15.
About 3:00 to 3:15.
Is it more severe than the morning peak?
Morning peak's more severe, according to the study, yeah.
I presume you also have people on the working route at the same time that kids are going to school.
Yeah. Oh, could be, yeah, yeah.
Because that complicates that, the left turn.
Mm-hmm.
Northbound, uh, westbound left turn.
And people going anywhere, I mean, just more people going.
Just everybody leaves at eight, yeah.
Yeah, everybody's moving at that same time.
Yeah.
DHS gets out about 2:55-ish, so by the time they hit their cars, it's right about 3 o'clock.
Well, is it as busy at?
So what's the AM people?
Right school time, too?
They want to see the AM.
Okay.
Single-lane AM.
Single-lane AM.
Okay.
Not quite as bad.
It's this one.
You have a lot of pedestrians and then a few parents, as opposed to one vehicle per kid.
But in the morning, it's bad going, I, I don't know.
Yeah, you can see hers. Yeah, this is a single lane.
There's all those left turners.
Yep. The real fun one is the single-lane 2040 AM peak. I'll show you that, it backs up all the way. Could use some background music, couldn't it?
Yep.
Something inspirational.
There's a lot of kids coming to school.
Yeah, and Kevin, the, the study, I think it was your idea to just channelize that right. So you have, the study recommended against that because as they're coming right, you can't see if someone's coming behind them.
So I think they neglected, they could have looked at channelizing the other right as well and that would have brought the stop bar forward. So you'd have.
Oh, channelizing the eastbound right?
Exactly. And then you bring the stop bar forward and then you're, you're, you're passing, you know? I mean, I just, that's what I saw, what I saw the record, why don't, why don't you just channelize the other right turn, too? And then bring the car up so it can see.
Did this study take into account any of the 91st Street extension at all?
It mentioned that it, it mentioned that it's happening, um, but. There's no, they didn't like try to adjust the traffic volume. No, no, not really. This assumes that, I think it doesn't happen, basically.
I think this is just an intersection, it's not a, a regional, a global model, it's not like a, um, so it's just really looking at this intersection. And to do the other, you would have to plug in a whole network model to try and see what, and then you're making more guesses just to see where people are going to go.
Let me show you the two, single-lane 2040 AM peak. This one, this gets messy. This is not, this is not recommended, this is, yeah.
Too much queue in there.
Yeah. See, this gets all the way back to.
But it, but it would be expandable, right?
Yeah, you know, I don't.
Construct the single-lane version in a way that's.
We're doing them now on a job where we're building the, um, we're building them to be widened to the inside, so it's actually.
Oh, so you, oh, to the inside?
Yeah, so that we're, we have a bigger diameter than we would need or normally use for a single-lane roundabout. But then in the future, we just reduce that.
Well, that's good.
That way you can accommodate the, what would be the left.
Yeah.
And all utilities are out of the way and the out of ones there.
You know, this allows for the southbound to westbound right being dual lane. You can, you can make that right for me, but you've got the one that's.
Yeah, you can still make the right.
You can still make a right from the other lane.
That's right. You don't see, in the model, no, no, no cars do it. No cars are doing it, yeah. Which could.
You know, yeah, the, the idea of signal in, warn in, for 23 hours and 40 minutes a day, it's doing more harm than good.
That's right, yeah. Yeah.
I think that roundabout will cause just as many wrecks as there's been there in the last.
It, it could, it could. The thing about.
People learning how, yeah.
The thing about, the thing about the roundabout is, um, and it, crashes at roundabouts tend to be side swipe. Fender benders, not very, not very serious, but crashes at T-intersections are usually much more serious.
Decreases the severity?
Yeah. Now, we didn't, I don't think we had, in this five-year window, there weren't any injuries.
Particularly when you get that situation where people are trying to make that left from eastbound, northbound. You know, you're trying to find a gap.
Yep.
And you probably don't have a good one and you end up either T-boning somebody or getting T-boned.
Yeah.
There were two injury accidents in that one.
There were two injuries?
Yeah, I thought there were two, one in 12, or 13 in one and 16. I'm not sure how severe that.
Well, um, yeah, again, this isn't an action item, I just, I thought it was pretty interesting. But it, it, it does, you know, start the discussion about, you know, when we talk about capital improvements and, um, with the apartments coming. You know, I know that we've, we've talked about several times about, um, the pedestrian solution for the whole Lexington corridor. Uh, I think that needs to be a component of our capital improvements discussion. You know, there's all sorts of ideas, there's some good ideas in here. You know, we talked about extending a sidewalk up along the west side of Lexington to Orchard and Crossing there with the, uh, rapid flashing or the hawk system, the overhead. So we'll, we'll, we'll need to get, dive into that a little bit.
First, I mean, if it was the single-lane versus double-lane, according to the study, the estimates only 1.18 million versus 1.28, 6 million. So I mean.
Yeah. It's a no-brainer, kind of.
It's kind of that if you're going to do it, the extra hundred thou, 108, 6,000 is all it's going to be, it's like.
This really, yeah.
You know, their point that it is the perfect solution.
It is.
And I'm sure you guys have seen it, too, and we're seeing it where roundabouts are, are being used to deal with the school situation. I think it's the same solution they did over on Monticello where there is no good traffic signal solution.
It solves a lot of the problems.
Especially with the other Lexington commerce signal so close to it.
Right.
They'd have to be coordinated.
They would have to be coordinated.
Yeah.
And it gives me the opportunity for a nice little gateway art thing there in the middle.
Roundabouts are getting more common, I mean, you know.
I think where people really would get annoyed with them is when you deal with, like, going to St. James Academy where from Prairie Star to St. James, you have five roundabouts, or from 83rd to St. James, you have five roundabouts to where you're constantly just.
Yeah.
You have the same situation on where in our.
An exit like some.
Yeah, but, but if you're talking one interspersed in there, then I think it's not quite so bad.
Or when there's a lot of trucks, there, there are problems with a lot of trucks.
Especially with the function of how this would be in the other stoplight so close to it. Are we ready for it? That's a whole nother discussion, are there things that alleviate it? Although, I mean, I've had three discussions in the last three months with different people about traffic at that intersection.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, just the high school traffic and.
They're right, they're right.
Maybe we need to just tire up.
Yeah, the thing that it always comes back to is when you ask them, okay, what would be your solution? They always come back to the, well, yeah, it's only 15 minutes twice a day and when you start talking and spending their money for it.
It, it'll be interesting to see how the patterns change when 91st goes through.
It will.
It, that'll be telling, I think.
But I think that it'll change again when the apartments come out.
That's right.
So.
Yeah, that's a lot of people.
I think the, roundabouts got a ding because as they were first starting to get implemented, they were poorly designed. They were often too small. They were put too close together.
And, yeah.
They.
The clarity of the inside lane versus the outside lane wasn't clear when they first went in.
But you're seeing, um, you know, Johnson Drive and K7, I think, is awesome. Of course, it, it's a big one.
It's a.
You've got three.
It's kind of a screwed up one, but yeah.
It's because you've got three all that work together.
The mid, the middle, the middle one's the one that's messed up. On the inside lane drifting to the outside lane causes grief.
This would be an easy, this would be an easy one.
But this one's, and this one would be clear, if you're in the inside lane, you're turning. If you're in the outside lane, you're not. And it's not one inside lane drifting to the outside lane or anything like that, so this one would be a fairly clear.
Okay. Okay, well, that was it. We'll have more of the CIP discussion in January.
All right. Moving on, then, the executive session, we don't have anything, I'm assuming, nope. Advisory reports, Mike?
Yeah, so we had a kickoff meeting with RG Fiber a couple of weeks ago. And Mike Bosch and I have been working on some press releases, um, at least one, um, probably two. One from, kind of from his point of view, maybe to get out to his sort of community. And then also one, you know, from the city's standpoint. But this, and this is just an FYI, but he's also working with, um, he's got Nokia that's his vendor for all of his hardware. He's got the vendor for his Microduct, that seven-way Microduct. And then I think it's Corning is the vendor for his fiber. All three of those companies have indicated that they kind of want to contribute to some sort of a grand opening or groundbreaking or some sort of an event to kick off his efforts here in DeSoto. So we're kind of still working through, they don't know exactly how or what or when that'll all occur. Might not be on the actual day that we dig dirt, but anyway, um, it, it could be that it's, that's a pretty, pretty big event, um, coming up, so. Well, I'll keep you informed as we know more, we just don't know a whole lot what those vendors are going to want to do. But it sounds like from talking with Mike that, uh, they might want to put some, some effort into some sort of a promotional event for, for that. And I think that'd be fantastic for us.
Absolutely.
We're heading that direction, yeah.
What else?
No, sir, that was all I got.
Patrick?
Nothing for me.
Lana?
No report from me, ma'am.
Okay. Council comments, welcome back, Danny, what do you got?
Yes.
All right.
Glad to meet you.
Rob?
Nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight, ma'am.
Kevin?
I'll go then.
Go.
I, um, I wanted to give a report from the, um, EDC board meeting. We had a special board meeting on the 5th. And, um, what set it up is that Sarah's been working real hard at economic development pursuits and those pursuits that are job creators and creating jobs and capital investment. And we don't win all the time, so I thought it would be a good idea to have a representative from KCADC come in and say, give us some honest feedback. Where, where are we being, how are we being viewed? Where are we strong and what are the things that, that we're weak on? And, and so that we can channel our energy appropriately. So Kim Young came from KCADC and she heads up their animal health corridor operation. Uh, but she's also, uh, been in economic development circles in Kansas and Missouri as well as down in Wichita. So she knows the ED game pretty well. So some of her feedback was that companies that are looking for the area and, and recall, KCADC is only looking at net new job creation for the metropolitan area. So they don't get involved in a company in, on the Missouri side of the metro that may be looking for a new site in the metro. They don't, they don't deal in that, so that's, but that is, um, a situation we'd be looking in. So when they're looking at companies that are wanting to come to this area that, that Sarah's often responding to, they're looking for, they're looking to move fast, they're looking for vertical-ready sites, they're looking for no time for assembly, they're looking for easiest transactions, um, and they prefer situations where there's, there's single ownership or a development agreement already in place with the community. So that, that makes it easier. So what it came down to was, you know, I wrote down, it's, it's all about site readiness. So when we think about our community, when we think about DeSoto and having locations that, a business, whether that, whether it's coming from outside the metro or locating inside the metro, uh, it's really about site readiness. So our ability to compete for these pursuits depends on the amount of land that we have available and we're generally talking 20 acres or more that is readily developable. She also indicated that within the metro, there is, there has become plenty of, um... She also indicated that within the metro, there is, there has become plenty of, um, vertical-ready sites. North Point changed the game, Block is changing the game, uh, because they've put together a lot of, uh, industrial development areas that can be used for a variety of different kinds of purposes. The other big need is in Class A office space. We're not gonna, we're not gonna compete in that realm. She said they're really looking at urban core, uh, locations when you're looking at new Class A office space. So, the, the advantage DeSoto has is, um, when there's a pursuit looking for large parcels of land, then we're a little bit better positioned to have land in our vicinity that's large parcel. 100 acre plus, 100 to 300 acre type pursuit. We're not as development-ready and in part, it's not within the city. So, because it's, it's around our fringes, so that's something that we may, we may wanna think about. So it was helpful in that it, it kinda maybe changed our focus a little bit from thinking about pieces of ground that may be development potential for us or economic development opportunity to thinking a little bit more about how do we, how do we either position property? Or how, what property do we have that is well-positioned for being vertical-ready? Um, so you think about things like, you know, the, the industrial park, K-10 industrial park area and what, what's there, but those are smaller sites. Um, you think about then what we are doing with 91st Street by putting transportation infrastructure in, then that's becoming a little bit more, uh, development-ready. But it's beginning to think also about what, what, what can happen with partnering up with, um, some of the, say, industrial developers or developers of land so that it is already in a potential situation where it could be accessed. So, needing the, needing the ability to have utilities to the site to make it development-ready. So, when we think about what our potential is for, um, economic growth, job creation, capital investment, we really need to begin to think about our community is, uh, in the, in the form of how ready are we? So, you know, you can kinda hear those themes, you know, we're open for business. We can be, but we need to be as ready for business. A couple of, um, we talked about a variety of market sectors, you know, whether it's, whether it's logistics, whether it's, um, uh, manufacturing, we talked about animal health, we talked about data center-type things. And really, she didn't indicate that there's much, um, difference in the type of use really in where we sit. We talked about labor pool, for example, and she didn't consider DeSoto being necessarily disadvantaged from labor pool, maybe by being out a little ways. It really is boiling down to being vertical-ready, being ready, you know, quickly ready to develop. So, that might be something we collectively think about as well as, um, the consultant that we have working on our comp plan, you know, and feeding into, um, what are some of our strategies for utility extension or development agreements with certain parcels of land? You know, you think about picking parcels and, you know, Sunflower is just so far out in the time horizon that that's not something that presents a, a very good opportunity for us. We did get a letter from, uh, Jim Erickson from KCADC. This is an example of one of the letters saying, you know, you, you put together a good proposal, a good pursuit, and why didn't the customer ultimately pick us? Um, and I just underlined a few of the comments, uh, you're not quite vertical-ready. You need to eliminate as much of the risk as possible. Anything less than vertical-ready tends to get eliminated. But they believe that, uh, KCADC believes that there are real opportunities created when communities invest in making areas of land vertical-ready. And so those are the communities that are kind of winning, if you will, or being better positioned. Because she said that really when you get down to site selection, a, a user has already determined that the area is viable. So all they're doing is looking for reasons to disqualify. They need to disqualify sites until they get down to the one that's, um, successful. So, I thought it was interesting, um, Mayor, I don't know if you, did I miss anything?
No, I think you covered.
Or was I off-base on anything?
No, you covered the, the point well that we, uh, came out of that meeting, at least that I came out of that meeting with.
Yeah. I, I think it might help us in terms of the way we focus or the way we think about what, what we may wanna do to create economic development in our area. Couple upside, um, Kensee Power and Light through, with the merger with Westar. Uh, Kensee Power and Light has some very proactive community tools in terms of making some funding available. Um, they're out there to try to create economic development opportunities as well. And Sarah sees maybe some, some good opportunities to lever some cash that they may be able to put into pre-positioning some things. Um, so that, that's good for us. So, that's my report.
Good. Thank you, Kevin. I just have a couple of things. Uh, wanted to give a quick update. Uh, talked with the, uh, chairman of the, uh, fire dis, fire board, uh, Walt McDaniel. And they have officially appointed, uh, Todd Maxton as the chief. So the interim title is off of, uh, Chief Maxton now. He's the chief going forward. They authorized the purchase of an air rescue boat, um, a rubber raft and some supporting equipment. So we will have water rescue capacity in, uh, our area soon. They'll be going through training, um, and, uh, getting that equipment onboard. Last, uh, item on the fire board, there is a board position that will be, um, appointing, the rotating position that rotates between the county and the city. Uh, it will be our turn to appoint and that happens shortly after the first of the year. Walt McDaniel is in that position now, um, and he is asked to be retained. I have had inquiry from another citizen, uh, Dr. Brooks Young about being appointed to the board as well. So I'll be talking to, uh, to Brooks to, to get his, um, qualifications and reasons for wanting to join the board. And then if you, um, as council people, have any other, um, candidates that you would like to steer toward that position, um, I think we need to probably make this appointment. I believe it would, the, the position won't go vacant, so if, if we're not able to make it before their next board meeting, someone will still sit in the chair, but I would like to make it at probably our first meeting in January, so. Be thinking about that, um, maybe as we come to our next meeting and, and before that January meeting. If there are any other candidates that you think we should be considering for that position.
Walt is, was willing to go again.
Yeah, yeah.
I know that he's, heart's in the right place and I know that he's a good man. And he, his, backs up the city really well.
Um, I guess lastly, I'd like to, uh, I didn't recognize the council at the, uh, mayor's tree lighting. I recognized everybody else, but I apologize. I didn't call out the council for all being there. I, an oversight on my part, I think everybody was there, but Kevin who was sick, so, uh, thanks for supporting that event. And I apologize for not calling you out directly at the, uh, at the event. And with that, I think we're ready for a motion.
Make motion adjourned.
Second.
All right, all in favor? We're adjourned.